Pull our meeting to order for our regular session and you can stand at the platform, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have record on post sessions this evening. A motion to adopt our tempo, please. Any changes or additions immediately?
There's two changes. First, thirteen C. There is a $250 access fee on meals. It's actually for the substitute teacher, not for meals. And thirteen H. Back in full. And there's one more, which is how to minutes. Page 11 should reflect another committee.
All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Oppose? We'll get it. Sorry, get out. You know what? Okay. I thought I skipped something. Bye. Public comment on non-agenda items? Pretending that it's just a comment on something that is not on our agenda tonight. I both can. Okay. Sherry Morgan?
I just would like to continue to respectfully encourage you all to really think about, maybe taking a step back on this calendar. I know, being on the committee, there has been occasionally a comment of, well, you're on the committee, so, you know, that was the decision and that's where it is. But, you know, as a parent representative, I don't know if the community was maybe as equally represented now that there is so much commentary from students and the community and the fact that it's not a majority or an overwhelming majority. You know, the students do need to be heard. They were allowed, they were given a voice, but they were given a voice at your fact with the information that was then presented based on a decision of a calendar ending before Christmas, without any other options being considered. Nothing else was offered as, you know, we could look at this, or we could look at that. You know, missed opportunities in June drives an end date, not an exam date. And I think if you look at something from an end date, you might get different results. You know, what happens to holidays around Christmas? What happens to all the things that you have to do? Excuse me, do and get ready, college exams, college essays. It's just, it's a big thing for this community to not agree on with a larger majority than not. And I think that that might tell you something to really think about it. Maybe there's a different solution. You guys are extremely accretive in so many other ways that to vote on something that is really, when you think about it, kind of status quo for the education community, it's not why we live here. It's not why we hired all of these amazing people, it's because we're status quo. It's not why we have the school board that we do because we're status quo. We have a school board that has lived here, that understands the nuances of our community because we don't want to be status quo. We have technology. Why aren't we using that? Reverse classrooms. I mean, we had a great soft start. I mean, being at Thurston and the high school, having the kids registered, seeing all the great Rocket Ready stuff that they did. I thought school started without a hitch. It was like, okay, we do, we've all kind of been around and everybody's kind of done their thing. But it wasn't a, here we are, let's crown it all on everybody's throats because what happens if you start mid-August? Are they going to do all that stuff now at the beginning of August? Has that information been presented? Are people really stopping and thinking about everything that's going to happen if they move the calendar up? And if they do, we need to move it up, if that's a must. Are there other solutions? Does it have to be exams before December? Is that really solving problems? You know, what about these block days? I mean, a lot of solutions to consider, not just the one that was presented.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes. Did you turn a card in, or?
No, I just.
Okay, then just come forward and state your name.
I'm Wendy Offield. I talked to you guys at the meeting, I think it was in July or June, but I couldn't make the last one because I was at the pageant of the Masters that night. And as I sat there, I really thought about how sad I was to not be at that meeting, but how glad I was to be at the pageant. And so I came back tonight to just really, I guess, kind of follow up what the gal before me said, is that just really be mindful in the decision because I feel like at that meeting that I sat in, all I heard repetitively was, in Irvine, in Capo, in Irvine, in Capo, we're Laguna Beach, and Laguna has been different. I started school here 45 years ago. My kids went through school here. For decades, the calendar has stood as it is, and it's been very effective because this community is not every other community, like she said. And I also think that you have to factor in the arts, the beaches, all the opportunities there are for students, young to old, in this community to take advantage of why we live in Laguna. Those of us that have lived here long enough have seen a few, I can name two that I can think of, that were really terrible decisions by the school board. And I still think they're terrible decisions. And one of them really altered the way the schools were for a while. And then I, is what I see. My youngest grandkid's in school now. I feel like the district in some ways has really gotten back to where it was, particularly when I drive by the high school and the kids there now look like Laguna Beach kids, beach kids. And I just really implore you. I know you're all educated. You're an education board. And I think if you choose based on something that's a trend, thing in the moment, to change the calendar, like the other things in the past, or particularly one of them, poor decisions by the board, I really think this is a really uneducated decision. And it's really, I don't know. I don't know all of your backgrounds, but I just can't understand how this even got to this point. And it's clear that a huge portion of the community is not in favor of this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Come forward.
My name's Everett Wettin. I'm speaking also on the calendar change. I have, although for history, I've lived here since the 60s. Yeah. I went through school here. My kids went through school here. There's so many reasons why I think on the calendar change is not a good idea. One of them that keeps coming to mind is the employment of the kids at Laguna. Whether it's lifeguards under the city, or the Sawdust, or the pageant of the Masters. All those run by a lot of kids on their summer jobs. And I've spoken to the GM of the Sawdust. And she said that if a high school student is not able to see the season through, they're un-hireable. And I assume that's going to, unless the same as the city and the lifeguards and the pageant, where I know the festivals were a huge employment for me and my brothers growing up, as they were for, I'm sure a lot of people in town. My kids as well, I've been working for the festivals. One of the issues brought up was having a week off at Thanksgiving and having a clean break at Christmas. And the reason given for that, to my understanding, was of not to have any study over the winter break. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you push back into Thanksgiving, when you come back from Thanksgiving, you're approaching finals on Christmas. It was just a transfer. In my mind, it's the same thing, it's the same difference. You're just moving one thing ahead of the other. It also seems like it's affecting such a large group of people in a negative way to benefit a small group of people. And unlike everybody else, I'm just going before me. I may encourage you to strongly reconsider. Thanks.
Anyone else, please? Come forward.
Hi, my name is Cassie Morgan, and I'm a freshman at the high school. And I actually sat on the last, I actually observed the last board meeting where the calendar was proposed, and then it showed the new calendar with recommendations. And that got me thinking, were the students notified? Because last year, as an eighth grader, we all took a survey of what would you like to see in the new calendar? And what would you prefer, and what would you not want? And I, myself, wasn't notified of the new calendar, which I saw. It didn't include the week off at Thanksgiving, among other things. So I'm asking you, did you notify the students? Because the students, like my mother, Sherry Morgan, said, the students got a voice, but I don't think the students know about the new proposed calendar. And as a student, I think their voices to the new proposed calendar could be very valuable because this is their school year and it is their summer. Thank you.
Anyone else on a non-agenda item? So we moved to the next item, recognitions. We have no recognitions taken. We have reports of students rep.
As we begin the second week of the 2018-2019 school year, students are finally becoming comfortable with their class schedules and activities. Since homecoming will be on the first week of October, preparations for the dance and preceding activities are in a full swing. The theme will be revealed this Friday. Auditions for the Fall by Romeo and Juliet were held this past weekend. They're still be holding their club rush this Wednesday and their back-to-school night on Thursday. Top of the World's Back-to-School Night is this Wednesday. LBHS's is Thursday, September 20th, and L-Moros is Thursday, September 27th. On behalf of Laguna Beach's beach athletics, Mr. Neal and athletes are looking forward to their inaugural season in the Sunset Conference. In the new league, we will be playing schools such as Corona del Mar, Newport Harbor, Los Almodos, Huntington Beach, Marina, Edison, and Fountain Valley. League play will all, will begin next week. Breakers football is off to a two-and-one start, with their only loss being to the 2018 CF champions, Big Bear High School. An exciting 34-8 win against Dana Hills leaves students excited for this week's home football game against Bellflower High School. Our cross-country teams competed in Palo Alto last weekend. The girls placing first and the boys placing third behind two schools with high-state ratings. Girls tennis, golf, and volleyball have started off their seasons playing well. Boys sand volleyball and co-ed surf tryouts are being held throughout this week. Thank you. Oh, and this is Caitlin Gudslay. She is the co-student board representative.
Thank you. Do we have a local report?
Yes. So in consideration of continuous improvement, it's one of our goals, we have, I attended over the summer, a four-day conference on, for new presidents through, put on by CTA. And we also have trained our site reps through our service provider at CTA. She is new. She took over the place of Gina Rogers, and her name is Ayesha Young. So she came to our meeting yesterday and helped with that and gave us some good information. And then we also, as you all know, we participated in the PLC conferences. And I was saying at the end of the conference, when it got down to real practical applications and things, that's when teachers started to have some conversations about, that would be a good idea, that's a good idea, and how would we do that? That's something we're going to talk about more about PLC. So that real practical application piece kind of was what was interesting and more exciting to us. Of course, and all the theory is interesting, it's a good introduction, but this is what we want to put in practice. So I thought that was a, that was well-received and it was good, you know, particularly at the end of that practical application. And then in the spirit of improving relationships and collaboration, the Thurston Mills school teachers have put together monthly lunch meetings just for the staff to get together and talk, share information, et cetera. And the high school teachers, Summer Selway and Este and Lynn Gray put together monthly meetups. And so they have a full schedule, lots of fun things to do. Everyone can join in. You guys can all join in too. We're going to meet at TOW and do a five-mile hike. So you'll get your 10,000 steps in if you can join us this Thursday at 3:15. So I'm planning on going and looking forward to it. And I hope to see you guys there.
CSCA, we're good.
CSCA had a great start to the school year. And again, I know I mentioned it last time, but I would like to thank the board and the administration for the inclusion of so many of the classified staff for the first few weeks before school started and all of the professional development. That certainly, you know, the inclusion was wonderful. But more than that, working side by side with the teachers and staff is really important as we move forward. CSCA will be having their e-board training tomorrow off-site, and we will be inviting our site reps for the afternoon. At this particular time, I am doing the training. I think I've done this enough that that's how it's going to work. But I would like to thank Dr. Valario especially for sharing in the beginning, now everybody's part of it, the Strength Finders, because we will be using Strength Finders for our training tomorrow and looking at each one of our skills as we are on the grid, so to speak, and what we can do next to bring each school site members to an understanding of what's really happening in CSCA. Right now, I have one site that I'm looking for site reps in, but I think that will happen sooner than later. And we'll move forward in the very positive direction for the rest of the year.
Do we have any representatives from organizations, school power, PTA to speak? Those who might. Or members?
So I haven't done anything except the Welcome Back Breakfast. And I just wanted to thank Victoria, her team that did it, it was wonderful. Really enjoyed it. And it was nice to see all the staff and teachers together. Well, PTA council had their first meeting, and before the PT's meeting, and they felt because we did everything online, they were so given a review and wish report and talk about some of their initial plans for the year, things that they're doing in September, October. So even though it was Thursday the 6th, they were already underway. So it's been summer work, so it's good. And that's the only thing so far.
I'm Florin.
Well, you know, whether or not here they come, I mean, some of that. But we were ready. A real special thanks to all staff. I mean, it's, as we know, many folks don't go home this summer. Instead, we're busy prepping and the facilities look amazing. Our technology is most hard enough without a hitch, far better than we've ever had in the past. Thanks to Michael's team for all the work there. Lisa and her team and Victoria for the Welcome Back Breakfast and all the things that go along with that, which is amazing, wonderful planning. And then Alicia and her team and principals for really having, what I would say, two really strong bases of professional development for our future. So the students came onto campus and a lot of smiles, and especially at the elementary school level. And I'm always amazed when you get to the high school, there's, you know, a thousand kids going all sorts of different directions, but when they're all in, they're all in seats, you know. And so kudos to the staff there and getting our schedules up and running. And there are a lot of real positive feedbacks from the counselors around the master schedule and how great things we've seen working this year. So again, just thank the team, thanks to the administrators and all the staff for a really smooth start. And welcome Caitlin.
So several of you have already mentioned the Welcome Back Breakfast, and we did have a little change in schedule with our classified employees, so we had more people back for professional development this year, which was helpful. We had our bigger and better health fair this year and kicked off the wellness program. So we had so many employees that wanted to participate in biometric screenings that we're actually going to have to schedule a second date so we can get everyone in. So we're looking forward to that and also expanding our committee so that we have representatives from every site. Some sites are already offering planning events and things that, you know, are really good for the school culture and also will benefit other schools when they all come together and share ideas. Can they share some of those updates?
Sure.
Thank you, President Vickers. I'm hoping for the board, on the last agenda item, to possibly give us some direction regarding the Proposition 5 and our position to it. I gave a simple resolution on all of you. Or do we even want to just write a letter? So it's two questions I have that I'm hoping will give some direction on as a staff. And then auditors are here, things are going very well. And I want to thank all, everyone's involved in the audits, so the whole front district office and of course the finance team are doing a great job of it.
Thank you, President Vickers. So I'd like to acknowledge instructional services staff. They've been hustling, particularly Dr. Mayberry, for not only onboarding, but really helping us accomplish data confirmation. For Yadi and Yvonne for doing such a fantastic job with just personalizing support for each and every family. And then to Dr. Keller and the student support specialists for offering suicide prevention training just right until the end of school and offering additional support for staff. Thank you.
I left one thing out, but I think there's PTA council. They had all four principals come and all the leadership team come. So they each got to introduce themselves and speak about their school. And I thought that was really, I think, a lot of that. Because I did make a compliment about what a, what a good team we have, what a strong leadership. So it was, it was good for them, the PTA president scale, to take that information back to their sites.
Next, we have a public hearing. So I opened the public hearing. Ensuring availability of textbooks and instructional materials for 2018-19 school year. Certification of provision of standards aligned instructional materials for Edco's Section 6119 and 6422B. This notice of this public hearing was posted on August 27th, and there's a resolution coming later in May for action. So this is the time to receive input on the public hearing. No input or comment, so we close the public hearing. And next item is our consent calendar. Item H has already been removed, and corrections were made under A and C. Are there any items that board members would like to call? A, two, okay. Anything else? Any public comment on the consent calendar? Any questions? A little motion, please, for A, one, and three, and B through M, taking out H. B, okay, sorry, thanks for the next page. All in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I make one comment afterwards, that I noticed that the cost of registration for the conferences that the department has putting on, I know we don't have any, but I would like them to make sure we're available. But not for other districts that are having a lot more struggles, might be right.
Other information items this evening? I've.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. A, do you have to do A2? Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Upstate? Upstate, one of state. Thank you. Now we have our information item. Recognition of the Laguna Beach Unified School District as a no-place-for-day district. Dr. Lee, well, thank you. Good to invite the candidates. Very, thank you so much for coming. I'm a sunny guy.
President Vickers, board, cabinet colleagues, thank you for tonight. Tonight is a great celebration. So we will speak to you briefly, but it's important, a great topic. We're excited to be here tonight. So let's dive right in. About this, in 2017, a group of teachers brought the need to us. They've been listening to students, staff, athletics. They wanted to find a solution that would help to meet some of our needs.
And some of the students were saying to me as a teacher, I don't feel like my voice matters. I'm different and people make fun of me. You wouldn't believe what people say in the quad. I feel like I am not accepted for who I am on the inside. I'm afraid to be who I am. So some of these things really struck me as disconcerting, and they needed to be addressed. So we got together in the spring of 2017 and started discussing how we can tackle these issues and make these kids feel like they're included. I don't know how that worked though. A great thing happened this, well, disconcerting, but one of our students responded in the perfect way possible. We have our link crew orientation every year, and I train the link crew leaders, and they get a group, you guys are the link crew leaders. And they each get a group of eight to 10 students. They meet with them in classrooms, and they talk with them and play games with them for about two hours, and then they take them on a tour. Part of that tour is that the students wear costumes. And you guys pick out what those costumes are. They clear everything with me. So they get dressed up and they go on their tour. They have the campus all to themselves. And one group was out, and one of the students made a disparaging comment, an offensive remark actually, regarding one of the costumes. And my link crew leader grabbed the group and she said, we're going back in the classroom. So they were out and about on the tour. She took the kids back into the classroom and said, we need to address something. We don't say those things on this campus. And I didn't know about it. She told me about it afterwards. And I said, I'm so proud of the way you handled that. She stood up and she said to the student, we just don't say those things on this campus. It's not okay. Even if you were joking, it's not okay. It's an offensive remark. And they went back out on the tour, but she was shaking because it was hard for her to do the right thing, but she did the right thing. And so I was so, so proud of her. So those are the kinds of things that are happening because of this initiative on our campus. Kids are feeling like they have a voice, and they can stand up for students. So I was really proud of her.
So here's how we got here today. So as we talked about, teachers were the catalyst of this district committee. They took, they decided to take collective agreement in the summer of 2017, I believe, over July. Okay. This is our, last year was our pilot year. That includes a pledge from each site and three activities. And last year, we received a recognition to be a no-place-for-day district. We're really proud of that.
And this is all, you know, student driven, and we're moving forward. We're getting the kids more involved. So I know papers on that committee, and they're meeting next week, and they're going to help in the planning of the activities. Last year, it was largely the teachers. And this year, we're really getting the students involved. That's something that ADL really supports and wants us to do. So we're looking forward to getting their voice and giving their ideas in the planning process. One of the activities that we did last year, we watched the TED Talk, Jim and Yvonne and Gosia Deche's famous TED Talk, Danger of the Single Story. It's very moving if you haven't seen it. And so we watched that TED Talk, we discussed the stereotypes and the danger of that one story and basing your beliefs on just one single story. We had the students do some interactive stuff. We talked about basing on bigotry. And the students always have to reflect on the experience. So they did that, they did some writing, and we discussed it as a class. So it was a very effective lesson. And I think the feedback that I got from the students was, we're fine in talking about this in class. They were relieved, really relieved that we're having these discussions. So that was great.
So with that, I'd like to introduce Peter to you. And before I do that, I think I do really want to acknowledge Dawn Honeypepper, her leadership in this initiative. Kristin Cowles is taking over this year. We're really excited. Thank you for being here. We're just pleased to have these two extraordinary women help lead this charge. So thank you. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Peter who plans on pushing his own efforts.
So thank you for letting me join you this evening. So I'm Peter Levy, I'm the regional director for the ADL here in Orange County and Long Beach. And I remember it was just over a year ago when we had a meeting right in this room talking about anti-bias bigotry and bullying program and what that can do to help create healthy, safe, sustainable environments on campuses. And the good fortune was my intern last summer was a graduate from Laguna Beach School District. Shara Alakumra, Alkalum, no one can pronounce her last name. Alakumra.
Alakumra.
Yes, that, Shara. And she was really able to articulate from a student experience just graduating two years before, just how much simple things on campus can make students, whether or not they're women, teens, Jews, Muslims, race, creed, color, religion, feel like outsiders and not belong. And so it was really, it's very poignant talking to teachers, administrators, and students themselves about the importance of it. So let me just tell you a little bit about the ADL so you knew who we are. ADL started a hundred and five years ago in nineteen thirteen. The mission then is the same mission today, which was to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to fight for fair and just treatment for all people. It's always been that any bigotry and discrimination that's out there, you have to fight all bigotry and discrimination, not just for one group. Take on all groups. And going back to nineteen eighty-five, started the, so we're an anti-hate organization. We fight in a whole variety of ways, but our proactive work is through education. And in that spirit, in nineteen eighty-five, we'll be. Oh, okay. All right, I might have cut out a, all right, so the World of Difference Institute. The World of Difference Institute began nineteen eighty-five in Boston, which is really to say not just make a world of difference, but we have a world of difference. And how are we, and it's really our education based on diversity, pluralism, implicit bias, such that every student knows that they belong in their school. So it began in nineteen eighty-five, so we've been doing it for over a generation nationally. And it touches, you know, millions of students every year. And right now, we're actually in effort to try and sort of expand our footprint of offering our anti-bias, anti-bullying, anti-bigotry education. So it's really great to be working with the Laguna Beach School District in this capacity. Sort of the goal, I might have, somehow it's supposed to be revealed one box at a time, so.
That's part of my fault.
Yeah, it's a fun technology piece, right? So the goals are essentially by promote safe, respectful, inclusive learning environments, right? For everyone knows that they belong, no matter what their diversity is. To build understanding of value and something, it's all. And benefit, yeah, that's unfair, yeah. Right, to improve intergroup relations, right? To eradicate bias, bigotry, racism, bullying, and to encourage personal responsibility. We do this mainly through two programs, the no place for hate program, which is where schools take ownership themselves and try and bring all the stakeholders together. Teachers, students, and ideally parents and administrators. To really not just sign the pledge, which is generic about standing up and becoming an ally to those who are alienated, but also to then to look, address, assess what's going on in our community, what's happening in our school that we wanna address. And then how are we gonna do that in a way that is engaging of the entire campus and in an active fashion? We also have our programming that is facilitated by ADL professionals, educators. We actually have a couple of those coming up of doing some teacher training, some implicit bias training for teachers, as well as with administrators and people working in the office trying to address particular issues about LGBTQ inclusion and welcoming in the school environments. And that's all part of our World of Difference Institute, which I'm really happy and proud to be a part of. And, you know, then when schools participate, right, they get designated as a no place for hate school. Hopefully, you know, just like your CIF banners or whatever that you'll have every year, a no place for hate banner. And yours are coming, so you'll be able, as the code in the school year, you know, have a special ceremony on being designated no place for hate schools. And it's really wonderful that all the schools within the district were successfully complete really wonderful programming last year. These would also be wonderful deals also, but these are just some of our samples of also, you know, we provide a lot of, you know, free curriculum to teachers. That is all about the type of work that we're doing, about, well, you can see what's up there. You know, right now, I've been saying off to teachers about Colin Kaepernick and kneeling and what are First Amendment rights and how does that work? And what is athletes and activism and the history of that in this country? Cause there's a lot, there's a huge context. But anyways, we really try to take what's relevant and contemporary and part of the discussion that helps drive the agenda to create safe, sustainable campus environments where every student and every family knows that they're a full part of it. And that's really what ADL programming is all about and we're really happy to partner with the school district and with the wonderful teachers and staff to make that possible. That is all my information. You can also just Google ADL Orange County, you'll find me that way also. And.
So questions?
Yes, do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you. I think this is an awesome program, especially in light of. Yes, currently in hurry and I just, yeah, I just think it is so important that this is front and center for everyone. I think it's absolutely core to social emotional development and becoming the best person you can be. And I just think that the fact that we're supporting this is, it's just, it's just yet another indication that we deliver our mission. Thank you.
I agree with what Kenna said. I think it's, and we, I think it was that we took so much in one year and we got all our schools involved. Because we have, I know tonight they're down with the city council, they have a kindness resolution. But we've been looking at that for years. We started at elementary schools and then moved it up. And to me, this is just a more, it's sort of a more vigorous way to move, to really take a stand. And I mean, we're still doing all the kindness activities. It has made a difference in the students in this district. And this will make an even bigger difference, but this is gonna, this is gonna make a difference. And I agree with you. I think right now it's vital. The return to stability would be.
And it's a good point that we have. So whether kindness in the character, an upstand, or, and that just builds on that and gives relevance and contemporary information. And having a child who went through a lot of it last year, things he came home and discussed, fascinated by. But he really wanted to go, that's why we used dinner time to talk about it.
And we're signing the pledge tomorrow, the resolution of Respect High School. So it will be displayed on all the bulletin boards in our hallway. So we're excited about that. So that's happening tomorrow.
Is it, when you were talking about the one student that you did the, is that English classes that are due, was it just the year classes?
The TED Talk? Uh huh. We did that in all the English classes.
All the classes.
We did, all the students were affected by it because that's one of the things, the requirements for ADL and getting one of the activities approved is that all the students have to be involved. So we did it in the English classes because all students have to have English. We did it on the same day, so they were all impacted on the same day. We just wanted those conversations to happen, you know, at lunch and, you know, during the break. So, yeah, and social studies did quite a few of the activities as well, so, yeah.
And please know I'm available to anyone, right? Board members, community members, any questions or particularly if there's any issues about or incidents about bias and bigotry to help sort those out, just ask Elisa Nigal High School, try and work with them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few action items this evening. Our first item fifteen, approval of resolution eighteen dash zero seven for Edco's section sixty-one-one-nine and sixty-four-two-two B. Ensuring availability of textbooks and instructional materials for the eighteen-nineteen and certification of provisions of standards aligned with instructional materials. That's not to be overlooked.
Yes. So now that we've held the hearing, all instructional materials are in place. We have a set of workbooks that are on order for Elmore, but they are on order, on their way. Everybody else has everything they need.
Any public comment on this action item?
Any board questions? Motion, please. Any discussion?
Piper Warner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yep.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Armendon?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Item sixteen, approval of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, un-audited cash flow report.
I could just go from there.
That's hot.
Thank you, President Vickers. This is our two thousand seventeen eighteen un-audited actual report. We turned out in a very positive position as we normally do. And what I wanna do is do a brief presentation just showing the highlights of the report itself and if there are any specific questions into the report that you have on, I'll answer those at the end. So please a reminder of our eighteen-month budget cycle, six steps, if we look at the last one, we have to meet in the reporting departments for you. We just met the classroom expenditure threshold of forty-five percent, a little higher than last year. So we got point eight-eight percent above the requirement, which is good. And we've met the NCLB now, the ESA requirement. The indirect cost rate that's calculated through our Saks form is seven point four-six percent. And we'll submit that to CDE for proposing to use it through the nineteen and twenty, doesn't nineteen, doesn't twenty. And we'll talk about the GAN limit in a separate item about the need to increase it. Here's a snapshot of our general fund big picture. You see our revenues and you see everything unrestricted and restricted. This is a slight increase from what we had projected in our second interim report. So it's good and as we have discussed in the past, that's the result of us closing the encumbered purchase orders where the full amount was used. And that's why this is typically higher at the un-audited actual report versus second interim from this school year. You see our total ending fund balance for the year, including unrestricted and restricted, is a little over nine point two million dollars. As a reminder, the components of the, of the ending fund balance, they're up here, but they're also a more detailed breakout is off each nine of twenty-eight of the actual report itself. See non-spendable includes our revolving cash and some prepaid expenditures from the capital last year. We have our restricted programs, the largest being routine restricted maintenance. Committed is the five hundred thousand for Fund Seventeen that we took action on last meeting. And then the assigned is a potential one-time and some other small amounts that are included in there. And of course, the reserve for economic uncertainties is the one at the bottom there. So with that, I'd be happy to, oh, and here's the fund balances for all of our other funds. You can see them up there. The special reserve will be revised a person out to show the five hundred thousand dollar additional contribution. And the other contributing factors for basic A differential are the Fund Forty's, the CIT for Elisa profit figures, which are shown at the bottom.
Public comment on this item?
Any board questions?
Discussion?
Chip, we don't include on that compensation fifty-five point eight-eight, we don't include benefits, which would make it a much higher amount.
There are a few things that are excluded from that calculation that's on the Saks form in there, but yes, it's.
So that, that has changed and, you know, I'm asking if it, did it change, did benefits used to be included because the amount was higher?
Yep.
And I'm thinking.
I'm not sure, I've been around.
Yeah, you probably were born then. I'm just thinking that it used to be that the requirement was a much higher amount. So I, and so I mean, is.
A much higher percentage or a percentage?
Percentage.
You're saying it was more than fifty-five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
That districts were expected to spend, that benefits were included, so.
It's different for the, yes, different for the unified districts to elementary school districts too.
Oh, yeah. I read that, I, okay.
And so that's been one of the challenges, many of, many districts actually unable to meet that fifty-five percent threshold and factor.
Oh, I'll get my straight to the answers.
Because, because there's a lot, there are some exclusions that can speak directly in the budget expenditure. So, you know, there are some exceptions to that, and that's why it looks that way. Also, we have, you know, our budgeting includes basic reserves. We manage our funds differently than the resident districts do as well. So if you look, School Services actually provides a chart at all of their workshops, the budget workshops, to show the number of districts that are not meeting that threshold. And it's a, honestly, it's a fairly artificial number. They just landed on years ago and just changed it up again, so.
One of the largest factors, one of the best decisions I think we've made is setting up the FERC and the CIT because those expenditures do not count in that calculations. So as we have those major facilities costs that's not included in that, whereas if we threw that in, we would not be making these type of.
That was, I guess, kind of what asked your question, but I just, I needed to know. Any other questions? Again, and I was complimentary to your report department in speaking with the auditor of how much information we provide to help them understand our budget, our finances, but also what we're showing particularly in seventeen and forty because we are basically self-funded.
Yes.
And how expensive any capital projects are. We're good stewards of that. You was complimentary back to the, your office.
Yes, he's, he's coming with all smiles, with a fine optimistic on the audit itself, and he even got a few jokes out of the auditor, so.
If there were a call, both. I'd be a traditional. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chris, all in all. Item seventeen, action item seventeen, approval resolution eighteen dash zero eight, increase the twenty-seventeen eighteen GAN limit by three million fifty-eight hundred sixty thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents in adoption of the twenty-seventeen eighteen and twenty-eighteen nineteen district appropriations subject to GAN limits. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, President.
I'm gonna elevate to Dr. Dixon.
I don't wanna do that.
No, you're not allowed. Is there a man named Mr. Dan? Is that what they go?
Yes.
She was torturing us with this.
This is our proposition four from nineteen seventy-nine.
Okay.
Limit established for all state local public agencies. The limit increases each year, but if the corporations don't increase as fast as the limit, then we need to increase our limit as a school budget. Which, because our property tax growth usually will always exceed the GAN limit growth, we need to increase our limit. And what happens from this point is we have forty-five days to submit a letter to the Department of Finance telling them about the increase in our limit so that the state can reduce their limit by the exact same amount. So it works out as a wash essentially for the state, right? It's required for us so that we're not repaying back taxes.
Red to the chest.
Oh, my gosh. Can you make it a little complicated that way?
State, I just wanna know that.
Thankfully, the form that does the calculation is part of it. It's one of the test forms, yes.
Think about how it wasn't audited.
Probably got it wrong.
Yeah.
Public comment on this item? Any board questions?
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Piper Warner?
Yes.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Armendon?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Action item eighteen, resolution eighteen dash zero nine, temporary inter-fund transfer of six million dollars from the special reserve for non-capital outlays, Fund Seventeen to the general fund, just Fund One.
President Vickers, this is a low cash flow time for us. We're waiting for our first large property tax receipt of the year. So we want to borrow from ourselves, we put seventeen temporarily. As soon as we get the large property tax receipt, we will come back to the board with the information element in December, around December nineteenth, to repay those funds back in the funds that are from the general.
Or public comment? Board questions? Motion, someone? Any discussion?
Again, thank you.
Yeah, that was. We're the next.
Two of us. But I do appreciate you making sure that that is called out, that Mr. Dan.
But I do appreciate you making sure that that is called out, uh, Mr. Dan. Yes, I appreciate that.
We appreciate the zero percent interest too.
We do.
This is a roll call, please. Piper Warner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmandin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Action item nineteen, approval to purchase forecast analytics in a amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Victor. This is a very robust software that does a lot of things for us. It helps us consolidate where most of our data analysis can come from, for both educational reasons and fiscal reasons. For it, as you can see in the board item itself, it lists just some of the features. Staff has already demoed the product on training. And we feel that not only can it help against our reporting to you, the governing board, and our staff, but it also helps us to simplify a lot of our monthly financial reports that we do for our communities. So it's, we feel it's gonna improve the efficiency for us, but also give us more meaningful data in a more expedited fashion for our curriculum staff as well, so that we can identify where we're putting our resources, resources, and if it's having the most of our, our best of that.
Thank you. Public comment? Any word questions? Take a step one, it says access to data comparisons to other like districts. So that means it's, it's, it's in some place where we can, we can call that out to.
We can create. Yes, and you can create as many of those like district scenarios as you, as you want.
So, like, you just be profitable with that. So awesome. What other data the district uses?
There's about fifty in the state of California now. They're moving more into California for the national.
But do, but they have the data in the system.
They connect, they pull it straight from California Department of it, and then we upload our general letter data to them.
Any public comment? Any word questions? We were outwards. Motion please, someone. Any discussion?
I just think this is gonna be simpler, because when we ask them questions, we're really, really. Really want to ask them this, right, looking for consensus. So there might be something simpler, especially like districts and stuff, to be able to answer questions. I'm appreciating sharing some of these. Thank you for finding a new report back, that was how wonderful you are.
I'm sure you can see some of the charts potentially in some of the presentations.
Don't get lost. You try.
Don't get losted, is what I think.
Piper?
Yes.
Alan's favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Here is for all of them. Action item twenty, approval of board policies first read. These are the policies that we did at our policy workshop. So.
Yeah, we'll go through them one by one.
We really did that.
I can appreciate the, the board and their work on these. I'll say there's quite a few, a lot of updates, uh, as the laws change. Policies also have to be updated. So you'll see in the agenda, uh, policy number, description of other policy as well as notes when there was a new policy, a policy that was adjusted for a new law. Or in order, it was something that was an update, not necessarily for law, but it was definitely enough to less. So, um, one of the bylaws that we, we had a lot of discussion about at the actual meeting, um, the workshop, was related by law number ninety one fifty, uh, which is on page two sixty one. And that was specific to a student board member. And unfortunately for many years, we haven't been following this process. And I appreciate we have Piper, Caitlin here, and that, um, and have the process that should be utilized to train them on this condition. So you'll see in the third paragraph, it states to enhance communication between the board and the student body, and to encourage student involvement in district affairs, the board shop, with at least one board, at least one student board member selected in accordance with procedures approved by the board. So there was a lot of discussion at the, the workshop around this. This is the language that, um, I'm recommending that the board move forward with as it relates to the first read. But obviously, that's a board discussion, decision. So other than that, it's present for first read. Not necessarily actions. It's step one of two, unless you decide to waive, or should we go ahead and.
Public comment?
You're not voting, but get direction on, on any of the.
We will vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
So.
You have a motion, second.
No, no, just so that, second. So no, it's, it's okay. I, I like the way this reads. Well, that's a great, right, so that's, so thank you. But I think, I think when you pointed that out, as you can, for anyone who looks at this, a lot of these are impacted by a new law. The state's, they're busy every year. Although a lot of these came from one new law that covered, covered a lot of areas.
I appreciate we covered them all at one meeting. So we're just kind of, I'm gonna use the word grind, but we're gonna grind.
Oh, it's okay. It is a grind.
And then I just feel like we're, we are doing, we're practicing what our policies say. So I like, I think it's.
And one of the things I did have a conversation with Piper, she wasn't able to, obviously, be at the workshop. I don't blame her. One of the things that we discussed a little bit is the process we utilize this year. So I don't know if Piper and Caitlin have anything you wanna share around that topic, if not how we feel. But I mean, we discussed a little bit together. So, Jen, you wanna share?
So this year it was a lot more formal. Dr. Allman presented it to all the juniors. Last year, and there was an application, which included our recommendation and personal statements, and then two interviews, um, with administrators in the school, and then, uh, Dr. Gloria and Mrs. Robert. And, yeah, the majority was Kate with the eyes, but it's a lot more professional and formal from the past, where it was, we would just be chosen.
Well, you truly have an interest in this.
Yes.
We did talk about potentially having, you know, in accordance with procedures approved by the board, one of the directions that we believe might be a better way to go, that's why we're nice, to create, not a administrative regulation, because it would be, it'd be more like a, a process that we would attach to this. And I think it would be helpful to include both Piper and Caitlin in the discussion of how to go about creating that and bring that forward, um, to the board at a, at a future date. Obviously, they're seated now, so they have some time to have that discussion. And then we can bring it to the board for a discussion of, if it's part of the bylaw, that you would approve it. Uh, but I really, really appreciate the opportunity to work with us on, on that.
I agree. I will support that. Any other questions? And I support, I will not support, appreciate your genuine emphasis. I mean, and being involved in process and learning how it works and representing. And you wrote, and I noticed in your report that I gave all of the backside lines representing beyond just the high school as a student from the district. So that'll be a real addition to, to us. So we need a vote then to move these forward for second read on Piper?
Yes.
Alan's favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Here is for all of mine. Uh, our last agenda item, item one, we're going to request for items for the next meeting, request information for general comments. Hey.
Hi, Jen.
Jeff, I'd like to ask for, what would be the most effective, if it's a resolution or if it's a letter, what do you think it would be most effective?
The resolution was crafted from school services in California, and that was, it's their, they were asking districts to have, pass a resolution. So I believe resolution would be most effective. We could do a letter in addition to the resolution. Or we can do none of the above.
Is there, is there a time issue?
Just before the election.
And you put this, you put it on, is it'll come the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I think.
I'm just a clarification, which I don't have a problem.
Yeah. We should make it up resolutions now. I have a resolution at the end.
Yeah, I would encourage support. Yeah.
It's a resolution.
A resolution and a letter. You took resolution, okay, resolution, sorry. At that point, we think so. We'll have a draft for that date and mail it very next day if that's what the board is sending to, I think. Sending a clear message to those who are interested.
That's why. Oh, I would just, um, again, like to thank everyone for the breakfast and also the nobody's for aid. And the, I just, again, I just don't think we can stress that enough. And also, I didn't realize that Marta was retiring. So I missed that. So goodbye, Marta. You will be missed. She's still in the sub class, of course she is. I wanted to bring up, we had a request at the, at the ending last meeting, or I did, from Shadi coming in for a presentation, similar to what she's doing. Well, she asked us to come to the city council tonight, but I don't know. Uh, we're talking to Dr. Gloria. We have been doing so much for so long, uh, directed toward kindness at all of our school sites. So what is the feeling of the board in general? We have, if we have a presentation, but it's, it's hard for us to add something.
Right.
Do we, I, I mean, do we need to do that, or?
I don't think we do. Even though I support her kindness program.
Yeah.
So think we're doing.
Works within the district. That we, what we're doing and then. I mean, I mean, reality is, she wants to get the kindness lady to have you or, I don't, I don't think.
All this offer that she can come and do, just like any, public comment, she can come do a three minute presentation.
But I look at some of our, so all videos, and she can, which, and she is, because we're familiar with a lot of these that we've been doing over the years, that it's not new information to us. And I felt that her wanting to come was to present something that was lacking here. And it's, I thought, I thought I should bring it up. I was gonna make a decision. And then the other is, I think you all received the email. So I think we need to respond to Sherry Morgan's request that, that we, well, I'm not, any of us aren't gonna do that. One, one another, where she's asking that we start the process over again. So I think, I felt the way the emails came to us, you all about those emails, right? That we need to, in other words, I felt to get the consensus of the board.
Oh, okay.
That I definitely support reading this. So we can, I don't know.
I think this is appropriate, saying.
Yeah, well, it's just that there's no interest in the board, although it's my kind of.
I think it was appropriately done the first time. And it was, yeah, it was. It has been, it's been about a year that we've been actively working, working on this.
Now, what about the comment on change?
Well, this isn't based on comments tonight. This is based on an email that was saying, we need to start, we need to like.
Throw up.
Yeah. Well, I, I, no, I, I, I understood that also. I just thought about the student voice one is, we didn't, we haven't gone back and shown students all the differing.
Students were in school.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So that has, I just wanna make sure that that's pretty clear.
When they were surveyed, they were provided that a big human, committee recommendation.
Right. They saw that what the calendar would be correct.
That was part of the survey. It was the first, first page list survey.
And also, all people selected the top two reasons as to why.
Why, right.
If they were in favor of why. So, and the students made responses that was a full and break. So the Thanksgiving was not something, it's one that was right, but not.
Okay, so, sure. Since I was absent last time, I hate that. I'm sorry. I apologize. But I did go back and watch you guys. And you're right, I've done this for twelve years, and I would do it longer if I could, because I'm so impressed with who you are. Okay, I think that's, I have one more, two, two other things to comment. I shared with Dr. Gloria both of these things. The, an article I read about the American Pediatric Association encouraging all pediatricians to make sure by the time the child is age two that the parents have been encouraged about the importance of play. So it's like circling back to all this, and everything where it's not every minute of the day, until toddlers structured, to, to learn something and. You have to be, you can practice. And that, that, back to that concept that their play is gonna work, and how important it is for creativity and problem solving and all the skills that are needed in the current day. And so I thought that was really interesting for pediatricians to make sure that they spoke to new parents about their play, about actual, just play.
Unstructured time.
Unstructured, right, play. Go outside and play and leave some.
The fact that you have to call it unstructured time, and just play.
When they went to the first, just wanna play.
Just saying.
Let's play.
Let's play. Unstructured time.
And the other was a, an article that I gave him, a woman wrote a book about it. It's about spaces, and designing spaces for children. And what it referenced, that I thought was interesting in there, was the failure of the open spaces. The schools didn't like their open spaces, that we have in top of the world in Thurston and Haver in the, in the seventies.
I've studied that often.
And they were just a thing to do, and they quickly found out that it didn't work. Mostly for the noise of tape, so.
Yeah.
But it was, so it was.
It's a greater concept.
That doesn't work either. So I think again, it's like, so, what, what struck me about that is that we try really hard, and sometimes we get frits in experience. I heard the, the word's like candy. I mean, but in education, you're trying to continually improve, and things come along, and you try them out. But the, but the best part of that is when you analyze it and say, this isn't working, and so you fix it. Or you stop doing it. But it isn't that, that you know it has time, but it's not gonna work.
Every, every. It deserves a course correction.
Exactly.
Yes.
Can I say?
Yeah, I will.
So thank you for including us in the strength reminders. And thank you for all of your, you know, working so diligently on the physical finals, getting ready your telepd. And I'm not sure if anyone sees you in your, taking in all that input you do, and putting it in, and working, just trying to get a flowchart or a presentation down, so it's really impactful. And your focus on, my ability to watch and focus, I was involved. Thank you for all that you put into, yes, talking, all you put into that table, all the time. I'm making sure that everyone has what they need. So I'm grateful, because you're really, you're so intense. So thank you for allowing us to make changes. I could say this, sir. Do you, Matt, she answered her question, because she's working on it, working on it. But this final, working on her desk.
Future discussion items?
But in, as the year goes on, if you have something, make sure to bring it up. I'm deciding, essentially, I'd like us to consider. Make sure you write it down, because we're so interested, and it might just go right out of your ass. Your next meeting is Tuesday, September twenty fifth. Have we, can we meet in the location?
No, I think so.
Decided to do it here, okay. Uh, motion to adjourn, so I'm gonna second on favor.
Aye.